All right, everybody, I will get us started on time. I start this work session with our Public Works Department on I-494 planning, vision, and history. Oh, I forgot to check. Is everything on? All right, and I'll do a pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight is an informational session, but there's three key points to remember as they, as Public Works go through their presentation. On the I-494 vision is different than the detailed projects, and Jack has a really good explanation of that. Point number two, the Policemaker Advisory Committee is the body that will approve the I-494 vision, the components, the major components of that vision, and Mayor Reagan Gonzalez and Councilmember Troutman sit on that pack. And then item number three, or key point to remember, is tonight and the PAC approvals, these are not municipal consent. This is just approvals to this overall vision. Municipal consent will come later with the detailed projects. So Director Asher.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. So yeah, like, like she was explaining tonight, it's a discussion about the vision. Jack will get into the details of what the differences are and where we're at in the process and what is coming up. So there's a timeline. April Crockett is here. She's our area manager for MINDOT, so if there's questions, and we should ask them tonight and keep it high level. If we start getting in the weeds, we might just say that's a project detail, we'll get, and we're going to look into things. And I think Jack, that Jack did forward, or have forwarded, the Transportation Commission comments on what they spoke about. I can see it there. So if there's time at the end enough, you've had a chance to review those, it'd be time for discussion. I know that we want to wrap up at 6:45 sharp for the Boy Scouts. Is that right? So I'm just going to pass off to Jack.
All right. Thank you. I'll just get right into this. So this is kind of going to take you all the way back to beginning of time as we've gone through here, but as Katie said, some of the language can be confusing. And so what MINDOT often does, the definition of a vision for a corridor, it's a high-level study, tries to understand the technical traffic operations, some of the impacts, but it doesn't have the thorough detail that is normally done at a project level. Project level, it's when they get funded and they really are going to build something, and then they go through the environmental reviews, they answer all the questions I think we're going to all be looking for. And at that point, you have municipal consent, you know, because they will be changing, I'm assuming, capacity, access, and right-of-way impacts along the corridor. So they'll come back for municipal consent when they have a defined project. But I'll take you through the history. The vision right now, I'll just tell you, goes from the airport to 169, and so it's a bigger thing than they're going to build. So it's kind of, later when they come to build it, it fits inside the bigger vision, so that's kind of the methodology they use. So with that said, where we're at, they have this process, the screening process, so on the left side of the screen, they usually start with more ideas, more alternates, they go through some evaluation, and they drop some of the options before they do even more detailed information. And eventually, they try to get down to a recommended alternate, which is kind of, and this is again a vision word here in the center of the screen. At that point, they move into then the project design, municipal consent, all the environmental documentation, and that, and that again is going to be the more significant ability to answer questions in detail. And then construction, potentially programmed for '22 and '23, beginning sometime in there. I'll take you back to beginning of time. In the eighties, late eighties, they started to look at this corridor, MINDOT, Met Council, et cetera. A vision back then, here you might see the extents of what they looked at. So again, it wasn't a project, this is a vision. This went from the airport to 394, and back then, I attest ages, that was the Highway of the Future. I think that was a brand-new installation of 394. One of the things in the early nineties that was scribed as part of the answer, it was fairly unique, especially for that era, to have a solution that not just solved the freeway, but the freeway had to have supporting roadways. And so they identified the fact you needed parallel roadways, shown here in yellow. They had called it the Ring Route, and it was essentially a 77th or 76th street looped around into 24th and what's now called the American Boulevard going back in Bloomington. And so that network of roadways didn't exist. They envisioned it to have a synergy between 494, that doesn't always work, as we know it still doesn't work. What that did, if you look here, zoom a little bit into Richfield, you'll see that same figure, but we have now been guided to build the Penn Bridge, Lyndale Bridge, 24th Avenue, 77th Street, which was a row of homes. That was a tough decision for council back in the early nineties, but it was part of the vision. So this is how projects start to fit in to build a vision. And where we're at, it's not done. So here you see the underpass on the seventy, underneath Highway 77th in the yet-to-be-done. We don't have 76th Street to the west of Penn, down to the border, done. And these highlights here talk about moving the full access to Portland, closing the ramps at Niclet, and 12th Avenue. So that's, that's again the ninety vision, as it was scribed, where we've been working towards. Over time, like exams, I guess we update our vision. So this kind of slide gives a hint of what's been done. So back in 2001, they put an environmental document together that went off the nineties vision layout. There was a design for the interchange at 35W and 494 that was not fundable. It was huge. I'll take some personal credit blame for this design. So if you think about right now levels, so 35W, then 494 goes over to another level. But if you picture ramps flying over at two, at three, and four levels, it was a really good engineering answer, but not fundable. So they had to start over and say, is there a more cost-effective way to solve the problem without all that expense? So they came in, they came up with a design that had ramps that kind of swirled around as opposed to just flying up and over. They called it a turbine interchange. They updated the vision again in 2014 to see if they could further reduce the cost, but also accommodate the orange line. So that's what happened in '14. There was a transportation corridor study related to if MinPass would work done in 2017, and that brings us now to the study that was done today. So that's kind of the big timeline. I want to give you some information about some of those changes. This is a picture of the 2009 of a simpler interchange. It's not the four-level, very expensive interchange design. One of the things that compare and contrast, there would have been, the previous design, the nineties, there were long ramps that when they would fly over, they would go, and they would go, and they'd go, and big, long, impactful things. This eliminated some of those impacts. One of the things, I guess I was going to show you, is this is 76th Street, and the ramp would have gone underneath this part of the bridge and go, and go, and go, and this was in the way. So there was a plan back then to rebuild this ramp. So when, you can actually see here, there was a right-turn lane, the retaining walls were built, and then this ramp was the one that was planned to go around the ramp that was coming from 494. So it just kept tails dragging and dragging. So that's all was eliminated in 2009. But what it's done is it didn't have a path forward for this ramp being improved from where it is today. Now, orange line goes through here, et cetera. So this is something that we're going to be working with MINDOT, so that there's still, there will be a life, a solution for this, so it's not going to be ignored. But it's no longer part of required for the project and the vision itself. So in '14, they had three loops and flyover, so it was a, as you can see what the interchange type, this was a version of the BRT as it came through. So there was less, in this version, there were less ramps that spun around, and they left three of the loops in, so that was part of the refinement. One more time.
Yeah, and I think, Jack, that was mostly to make the interchange improvements feasible, so they didn't have to do the giant turbine. They can do that phase one, that is now got some quarters of Commerce funding.
So just like the Ring Route I showed you from the nineties figure, where 77th Street and American Boulevard support the movements, but not just all the freeway, but this is a similar concept around the interchange of 35W and 494. And in this case, I'm just going to use the term that was coined for this as more of a box. So the box means the roadways, so if you had Lyndale, 77th, 76th Street, Penn Avenue, and 82nd Street, you form a box. And then the idea was that some of the movements, say, for example, you know, Penn Avenue to and from the east might be restricted, so if you were to go eastbound, you might drive the box to Lyndale and then get on eastbound. So it's another concept that says local ramps too close to the freeway freeway connections have to be managed, and one management is to allow the existing roadway network to carry that traffic to their destination. So that concept lives on today in the design of the project. I talked already about 76th Street, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you, zoom in pictures of these other three interchanges. This is Penn, to the west of Penn. This is the design, as things go to the west. This is still the end of that turbine ramp, so it goes a little bit further like it used to. I just want to flag that there's three homes, by the time you make room and you shift over the frontage road, that would be acquired to get this design in here. Those homes, or actually a stretch in here, has been shown on every layout since the nineties. It's always been trying to make room for the ramps.
Say, Jack, can you just go back, back up to one slide real quick? I just want to point out that, Jack will talk about the PAC, but what Jack's covering here is all related to the interchange, and that's the next thing that the PAC is going to talk about, is the interchange part of the vision approval. And so why he's talking about Penn is because Penn and the Lyndale and 82nd, they're all part of the interchange vision because of where the ramps touch down and things like that. And so the access is that change at Penn, like northbound, 35 to Penn Avenue is no longer connected in the vision. That's because of the interchange, and that's the decision that will be before the PAC, I think, in February, if I'm correct. So, and that's why Jack's talking about Penn and Lyndale.
Right. And so the vision in this case hasn't changed. What's being proposed now is basically the same as what's been posed in '14. So showing, showing that has some tails that go to the west and the widening, and so there would be some home acquisition. Here are the bridges, so it's a zoomed-in picture, but if you can, Penn and you're going eastbound, you see there's now a bridge, and this is the ramp that would take you to go south. So you can't go south from Penn because you just bridged over that ramp, but that's to allow the safety and operations to be improved between the two freeways. And conversely, the other direction, you see kind of the same thing. So you see, in the design, there's some, it's too close to have both, so instead of eliminating it, it's, like at 76th Street, you cannot go south, we never have, because it's too close. Penn is too close to make this work, but the design allows at least a bridge to go to some of the directions. So you can continue eastbound, but you say can't go southbound. Lyndale, we worked over the years to perpetuate the fact that Lyndale doesn't have those little bridges, and so Lyndale actually has its full access to all the directions. And so that was one thing that we were able to perpetuate in the current design. This is the same thing down at 82nd Street, that edge of the box, you see again the same bridges, so there are certain movements, so you can go north from 82nd, but you can't get to 494 from here. Yeah, so that's kind of the consequences of this idea that there's local connections, but they're too close to the freeway, so you can perpetuate some of the movements, but not all of the movements.
And primarily, what Bradenit does is eliminates all that back and forth, so, because it's weaving that we're trying to eliminate, because that's where all the crashes happen, so people trying to get on and off, and that's short of a distance.
So this brings us to the current process again. So as they're looking at the vision, they've organized and grouped, I should say, grouped the new vision into these three categories. So the first thing that they studied was the mainline operations and its expansion, and it goes from the airport to 169. Their second area was the access reconsolidation study, you know, to bring full access to Portland, again, kind of mimicking the design that was proposed back in the nineties, which includes the underpass. All right, I said it. And the interchange itself, which is kind of the thing we just talked about, and the implications to the local roads based on that. So again, this is their process that they're trying to get to by the end of February, or February next month, to get a decision from the PAC, Policy Advisory Committee, on the vision itself. This is the decision-making process, so the TAC is the Technical Advisory Committee, so I will go to those meetings. And then you have the Policy Advisory Committee and some reassignment. You go to those. So at two different levels, trying to make sure it's got that kind of communication. Information meetings and supporting those processes, you see the Transportation Commission, the full council at Richfield, Bloomington, at Dyna, and Eden Prairie. So it's a process that kind of feeds into the decision-making, and I just want to reiterate, municipal consent comes later. This is a vision decision-making process. This slide's a lot of words, but it just kind of shows some of the depth, in which they did use the screening methodology for the mainline. So you see a lot of different categories, freeway operations, you call that level of service, person throughput, travel time delay, and what they did is they compared it to building nothing, general purpose lane, just a regular lane, and adding a MinPass lane. So this is adding a lane, just a regular lane and MinPass, and then you go through the analysis, and you kind of have a Consumer Reports format. At the end of the day, the decision-making process, the TAC and the PAC at this point, have made a recommendation to move forward with MinPass for that aspect of the project. So that, the Technical Advisory Committee put this on their November 16th meeting and approved it, and the PAC concurred with that on the 19th last year. So this is the next category. This is that access consolidation, reconfiguration. The problem, to be clear, these red bullets over here on the table indicate the bad crash conditions when the ramps get too close. And so this is the problem that's number one to solve in a corridor like this, and, yeah, that's the wrong one. And so the design, I just kind of put some highlights, so this would be the final recommendation, is to have the Lyndale interchange, Portland, the underpass, and 24th Avenue. So that would be the configuration. This slide just kind of shows the traffic as it would be redistributed with the interchange movements. Orange shows a increase in tra, a decrease in traffic, so there would be less traffic on Niclet and 12th, more on Portland. But technically, it's not overwhelming any of these streets, so again, the concept that it does work. And that was moved through both the TAC in November and the PAC in December last year.
Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Bros. I had a question about the box concept, just how this figures in, that slide didn't, all right, maybe I don't think showed the increased traffic on the outside of the box, and I was wondering if we had any vision or any expectations about what that might look like.
A similar traffic figure for around the box?
Yeah, just how are we looking, what kind of increase are we looking at when it comes to 66th Street and Lyndale?
Thanks, Councilmember. We do have that information, actually, at the last TAC, we shared information surrounding the interchange, and we identified the level of service for each of those intersections all the way around the box. That was one of the comments that the Transportation Commission had as well, so we're happy to share that information, and corresponding to the level of service would be those volumes to help understand that.
And this is a really silly question. When you say "level of service," what does that, what does that mean, or in this context?
Yeah, the, the level of delay for the intersection. How is the, how are the moves at the intersection operating? So it looks at the intersection as a whole.
Okay.
So yeah, so we get to the third category, which is the interchange design in the box, and it's, and that was again presented at our last TAC meeting. The, the one way, I guess, back to these visions, one of the things I think that's going to be different for you between the vision and the bite at the apple when the municipal consent comes in, has to do with the analysis to date, like I said, with the Portland area. Things will work, you know, they don't break down, but that's maybe not the threshold we, as a community, consider good enough. We would like to know a little bit more. I don't think they're prepared to have the detailed answers. So the, the analysis at the TAC meeting, we just, she was just talking about, shows that the traffic lights can manage that amount of traffic. So the change at Penn and 82nd Street are really the two changes, so, so they technically can handle the traffic shifts. I think there's going to be some questions as we get into the Transportation Commission comments. You know, the route to Best Buy from the south needs to be better understood, because you can't get the Penn from the south. So in that particular, so, so that's, I think, maybe where we're going to next, as we define, work through the next, next levels. So again, last, last week, we did have this technical evaluation that, that was presented by, by MINDOT, go through the January 7th TAC meeting, and concurred that technically it does seem to continue to work. So these vision concepts have been validated. But then, we did go to the Transportation Commission that same evening, and we do have the comments that we put into your packet, so I didn't try to carry all that forward into the presentation. The PAC, again, has representation between the mayor and Councilman Simon Troutman, so I guess I have a couple more slides. So the remaining timeline, so in January, actually, some of this has occurred. We had our TAC meeting and the Transportation Commission meeting, we're at the work session identified here. I think Bloomington Council meeting was last night. Eden Prairie, and then, so next month, the key is going to be to have that PAC meeting and the council to prepare and inform the PAC from, from what we've heard. So showing that MINDOT has gotten through the first two of the three areas that they're looking at for the final recommendation. And just back to the timeline, they're hoping to get through the final, the third one at 19, so they can get into this further, more detailed information the rest of the year.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. The first one, it sounds like what you were saying at the end, we don't yet have the specifics of what the new Portland Avenue interchange, or on-ramp and off-ramp, what that would look like, how that would impact the local properties. We don't have that yet. Okay.
Yeah, correct.
That would be more of a project detail.
Yeah, okay.
And that project detail has options or alternatives that still need to be vetted, so there isn't a single answer, so there's still options, so there's, that's why there's really no solid answer on that.
Okay. And then, I notice our, I mean, we are talking freeways here, but our vision is very car-heavy, and I'm curious what, what if any conversation has happened yet about the pedestrian and bike routes across 494, that I think currently, there's, there's a great bike route on 12th, and that's sort of it. And I know that a lot of residents in my ward specifically ask about how to get to Walmart, because there's no grocery store in that corner of town. And so I guess I'm, I don't expect to have all the full details, but I guess I'm curious if, I saw some of the transportation comments were asking about pedestrian access during construction, but I guess I'm curious about that and pedestrian access with the completed project.
Yeah, so, so there are, are two components. One, one is, what you're talking about is the local network. These kind of projects are as big a comprehensive spectrum for transportation as possible. So yes, you have people trying to walk to get to food, but you also have 494 and the airport and all those kind of things. So, so there is a need for them all to work, and that's the challenge. You're right, most of the work done to date has been centered around to get the freeway to work, because without the freeway working, we would continue to suffer as we do. So, so that's the number-one goal, and so for MINDOT, but they don't ignore that. So in the work they've done to date, they've done a lot of work. Is it fair to say you've done a lot of work? The pedestrian analysis was rolled up into one of those Consumer Reports at one of the TAC meetings, and there was a question just like that asked. So then they opened up a presentation that had about 60 slides detailing all of the analysis that they've been going through. And so it's, it's back to, there's so much work to be done that they can't do it on six alternates. So that's part of the process where they're trying to answer these questions. Once they get this vision in place, once they get some funding in place, they'll be able to zero in on a project and then do all the work necessary, because answering that question, say, at Portland, well, what about at France Avenue? So the work, if you're not going to build France Avenue, you don't need to do all the work right now. You see what I'm trying to say? So they need to kind of get these two big pieces kind of in front of them. But they're prepared to do it, and they've been framing it at a higher level with all that concern.
Yeah, and I would say that my, my, I've noticed, there's talk about pet and bike, and I think, I'm not worried that it won't, it won't be part of the discussion as far as the local crossings, and, and for Portland specifically, you know, there's that Center for New Urbanism, is that Congress or Center?
Congress.
Okay. That will be looking specifically at that intersection, too, so that'll be interesting to see what they come up with.
Congressman, Congressman! Councilmember Troutman.
The biggest promotion of my life.
Promoted.
I, I just, Mr. Bros mentioned this, and some, it looks like some of the TAC comments address this, but how not being able to go south will affect Best Buy and the, you know, maybe 20,000 or so folks that come out of that, that building. As, I know there are some concerns raised. Do we have any insights about how not being able to easily access south? Do we have any insights about how not being able to easily access south, the southward 35W will be addressed? Well, I mean, it's, it sounds like it'll be a challenge for, for South Town and Bloomington a little bit, but I was just wondering.
And I'd just like to add to that, the role of the Best Buy folks in that conversation too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, they, they've been engaged over the, over the years where they existed in that site. I know in 2014, they were actively engaged in, inside, inside decision-making. The, you asked about, you know, how the traffic works. So one of the things that's, so back to scales. So if you add the capacity and the efficiencies along 494, and the ramps aren't so close, you've got the extra lane, there's like a lot of cars that fit on 494 that don't fit now. And so there is kind of a picture-opening day. Things would actually be a lot better than they are today because of the relief that a better working mainline has. And so then things grow back, but at the same time, there's extra miles traveled to, say, to get to Best Buy, to keep it focused. You could say the same thing from the other direction to get to Target. You know what I mean? If you're trying to get to Target in Bloomington.
Oh, I wasn't meaning Best Buy, the, the store.
No, the headquarters.
The headquarters.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just trying to say, the, the network that's supporting the freeway has less support when the freeway works better. It doesn't go away, but you kind of understand that it's a reliever of the freeway in general. And so as the freeway works better, it needs less relief. Does that concept work? And the similar, that's what's happening around the 35W interchange. And so as, as it has a, a decrease in traffic because the freeway works better is part of the formula, but because you have to get off sooner to go to Best Buy, there are certain pieces that actually have additional traffic put back in. And so what will happen in the next round, I would just say, a more detailed analysis of going to Best Buy would be part of what we would ask MinDOT to perform. So how does it travel today? How would it travel in the future? Is that?
No, I, it's not how, and, and just when you say go to Best Buy, we're talking about the headquarters.
Headquarters.
Yes. Yeah, and I, I was thinking more of how the, the slow, if, if, if you just literally can't, if you're, if you're getting off on 82nd, and then you're driving through the, that corridor, and maybe this is what you're, you're getting, just the, the increase in minutes in that.
That could be studied.
Yeah.
So the condition today, and then the condition in the future would be something they could also do an analysis.
Because I think in the aggregate, it makes sense that things are going to readjust. If you're one major employer, it, it seems like there wouldn't be as much flux, like it would just have an impact and it would be what it is. If we could get our arms around it, maybe, and maybe it's not, maybe it's offsetting and, or better, I don't, I don't know. But just curious about that.
Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you. I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around what you were just saying. Are you saying that, that part of making the freeway work better is sort of purposely taking all of that traffic to Best Buy and other local places off of the interchange?
Correct.
Okay.
So the box.
And then are you also saying that if that, I was trying to understand what you're saying about the, the reliever, the box, that traffic on those box roads would have, like, more people going to Best Buy, say, but that because the freeway is working better, that people who currently use the box would be more likely to use the freeway in the future? Okay.
Yeah, let me, because it's comprehensive, let me just go back to one of that, that 90s vision that shows the whole map. So on this slide, you see the 494 down the middle with the reliever roadways. Well, this is also overlaid with the box. So if people are using American or 77th because the road doesn't work, they're driving through the same box. So, so this, this, this is the reliever network for 494 that when 494 has a MenPass lane, there'll be better operation, so they won't be bailing off, trying to use these other roadways. When you overlay the two concepts to make the interchange, so you see back in 90, there was some kind of, gosh only knows what that was. But some kind of thing in here that has been replaced now by the box. So the idea that in the middle here, now we just zoom into this area. This area, the design, is putting more traffic on the local roads to make the safety improvements by the ramps. So it, it goes back the other way. You're seeing, these aren't really the reliever roads. You know, Lyndale is not a necessary reliever road, neither is Penn, but this is doing double duty on these two legs. So it's complicated, I guess is the best way to keep, so it's, there's a reduction because of the overall relief needed because of the MenPass lane. And that's a lot of cars. That's, that's a huge improvement, because it's not just a lane worth, it's a better, more hours of the day because of the ramps moving, because they're too close, because that makes things break down. So the capacity and the safety improvements on 494 take traffic off of American and off of 77th Street that's out there today. In the box, because of the bridges that you can't get to Best Buy headquarters from the south, there would be more traffic diverted onto the street, but that's still probably a smaller number than how many got off the whole network because of freeways where they're going to go back. Does that make sense? Again?
So because they, because people are moving easier through 494, there are less folks that are using the reliever routes as, as a way to escape the traffic.
Correct.
But because, but because there are some, there, there may be some less access at some points that will invite new travelers on those reliever routes, but they're not seeking relief as much as they're going to and from the destination.
That's an access change.
It's an access change. And those are more the folks that we want coming in and out of our city. Thank you. That took me a minute to get there, but that makes sense.
Councilmember Whelan.
One final clarification, just because I don't, my expertise in the area of traffic study is zero. Do we have a way, I'm guessing we have a way of knowing how much of the current traffic on these reliever routes is like through traffic that would be likely to move on to 494 if it were better? Is that accurate?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Do we, do you have like a ballpark percentage of how much of the traffic we think?
Not, I don't think we do. One of the things that, I'll just tell you, it's gotten a lot more sophisticated in the last couple of years. Your cell phone is tracked, and they are now able to use that type of data. So the specifics of what you're saying, and it's even down to the pedestrians and bike. So in the analysis we were talking about over by Portland, they are now in the traffic world able to start to see basically where did the cell phone go? And so how many people went over the bridge and how many went to Walmart? That's a question that we've asked them in that other analysis. So, so pedestrian movements across the bridge, how many went to a destination like that? So, so that would be something, again, that in the next level, they'll be able to answer those questions very specifically.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple big, big-picture questions and, and relationship questions in regards to the TAC and the PAC. So when you look at the decisions that will be coming before the PAC, so the next one in February is approval of the vision, are there other, what are the other decisions that will be coming to the PAC? Decision points?
Thanks, Mayor. So the last, as a part of the vision development for the corridor, as Jack outlined, we have the three areas. We have the reconfiguration area, we have the main line, and then we have the interchange. And so this last one, as a part of the elements for the vision, is the interchange. So that one will come hopefully after that, we, so as we've developed this vision, hopefully we can start figuring out how we're going to phase this work, right? So where are we going to start? How, you know, with the money that we have identified from Quarters of Commerce that can do a thing with kind of parsing out different areas on the corridor. Once we figure out what that next project is, or the first project actually is, we'll be bringing those elements through the TAC and the PAC. So I, I don't have a good timeframe, you know, I'm hoping that things just keep rolling, that the project can move in, you know, into the project development, but we're, we're working to figure out what some of these, you know, how do we phase this thing?
Will the PAC help decide how to phase it?
Yeah, I guess that, possibly, yeah.
So it would be the big vision, and then once that's approved, the components of making it happen?
Right, yeah, because if you recall, right, so two years ago, when we started this effort of figuring out what the vision was for 494, we didn't have any money. We had $0. You know, we had some pavement preservation and a bridge thing, and, but we really wanted to figure out what is the vision of the corridor? And then how can we, how can we develop an implementation plan to start identifying funding for it? So then we get this Quarters of Commerce money, and it, I don't want to say it screws it up, because it's a good thing to have the, the regional investment, but trying to figure out, you know, this Quarters of Commerce funding is specific to do a thing, and how does that thing fit in with what our implementation might want to look like?
Right. Okay, and then can you, I think I know the answer, but I just want to have this discussion on the record too, for other folks in, in the public. Can you share the connection between the TAC and the PAC? So the TAC is with the technical experts and the staff, the PAC is with the policymakers, but in terms of ensuring that those conversations aren't missing each, missing each other and that they're, the TAC's work is informing the PAC's work, how is that set up? Does that make sense? Okay. I mean, the PAC, let's say, the PAC could be having like one totally separate conversation or going in one area from a policy perspective, and then there's the technical experts. So how are we, how is that, those, how are those conversations being bridged?
Mayor, for me, and I've been to one PAC meeting, and I know there's been two, is that what I saw was MinDOT presented what the PAC, the TAC had agreed upon as a recommendation for the PAC to consider. I would say that, I don't know how the committee would, I mean, maybe they're going to talk about things that came up and have what discussions were had at the TAC, but for Richfield, I think it's a conversation between staff and, and you guys and making sure that you're, you're prepared for those and what discussions are there, and that's what tonight's kind of about as well for this interchange vision, decision coming up. I'm not sure how it's working in Eden Prairie, how it's working in Edina. Do you want to speak?
Yeah, so thanks for the clarification. So we have this process on all of our major projects where we have the TAC and the PAC. And so not wanting to speak for the city of Richfield, but that's typically what we see in a lot of cities, is that at a staff level, either, you know, as we work through details, they're giving council work session updates to their entire council, or they're inviting MinDOT in to, to bridge that gap and share the information. And then the other piece you have to remember is, so then we have this PAC, which is only a couple members of your council. And so ensuring that your entire council is, is getting updated, because there will be a time when we get to have all the, the full funding to do a project, and then we need to come for municipal consent or concurrence on the project. So making sure that all the other council members are up to speed, it's, you know, maybe it's us coming and presenting at the council, maybe, you know, some, some cities, the representatives on the PAC take care of updating the rest of the council, so that can happen in, in a variety of different ways. But in general, it's those staff conversations with the council, and we're happy to be a part of them or provide information or ask question, answer questions if that's desired.
Thank you. Yep, because in the past meetings, I've, I mean, I've checked in with staff on, on kind of, you know, the role in the agenda and all of that, but then thinking about the role of approving the vision, right, tonight is informational, correct? So you're not asking the council for a, a vote on the vision? So will you ask the council, and then my job is to rep, say, the city of Richfield in representation of the council?
So Mayor, that was not the plan. And that, and like, as, as you know, the PAC's already made two decisions without having the council vote on that. You know, we, that wasn't, in fact, when I was at the last PAC meeting, I did not know that you guys were going to be making decisions on what was decided at that meeting. So I kind of thought there would be a council action possibly. So I learned at that meeting that that's not the way that, that the PAC is operating, that the PAC is the decision body for the vision and other, other things, but municipal consent is where the council will vote. If you would like us to bring it to the council, we can do that as well, so.
Yeah, I don't have a proposed solution. I just want to make sure, I mean, I want to figure out what our game plan is for sure.
Because our process is our process, it doesn't have to do with MinDOT. So if we want to go through the council for a decision to make sure everybody's okay with the interchange vision, we can do that.
I, I mean, I'd leave it to staff to discuss too. I don't know if other council members feel a certain way. I, I just want to make sure that on our end, you know, we are doing whatever we need so that when I'm doing, I have checked in with staff, but that was me checking in with staff on, you know, the, on the meeting content, but then in terms of representing the whole council and the city.
Right.
And then I think at the meetings, they say, here's what the TAC discussed, so that informs the PAC, which is nice, but again, also making sure the technical experts and the policymakers are in alignment, and maybe that's, I mean, that's just to our city, I guess, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think one thing we can do is, and this is part of the next steps summary, is that all of the council members should provide their, any feedback that they have after this meeting. To me, I will share that with the entire council, and we can get answers to any of your questions and also shared with the entire council. And then we'll check in with, with you, Mayor, and Councilmember Troutman, to see if we need to add some time to a work session to have further debate at a work session, or if we, if you feel comfortable going into that February meeting and future PAC meetings.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I just wanted to read Councilmember Supple's comments, because she did send them over to me, so if that's fine, just to read through them. Yep.
I would just like to add back to the synergy between our process here to City of Richfield and the, and the project, that if you can consider the TAC and its information and the Transportation Commission, so I've been able to try to keep them up to speed as we've gone along. Actually, for the first two segments, we actually have commission recommendations to council to support the, the two segments. But then in court, detailed coordination with MinDOT, they said they don't need a council, council action for the vision. So we didn't bring it forward to, to council at that time, thinking we would actually put the three together in a council action, but then it wasn't required for the MinDOT process. And so we were approaching this at staff that TAC and the Transportation Commission were kind of informed at a similar level, and then we would move to council as kind of a parallel with the PAC. And trying to keep things informed.
And then that reminded me of another question. So all these comments from the Transportation Commission, how did, on the vision specifically, I don't know if there's some questions that are actually like more project level that should not be in here, but then how are those going to get responded to and then inform further discussions on the vision?
Most of that, MinDOT, I hope, will be using as they go forward with the project in more detail.
Okay, so will we get responses, will we kind of get responses back?
Probably not at this point.
Okay.
It will be, again, guiding their work so they can answer those questions in more detail when they get there.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say probably not before the vision, and we'll work with them, and maybe we will, before the vision, there's another commission meeting before. Yeah, I would say probably not before the vision, and we'll work with them and maybe we will, before the vision, there's another commission meeting before the PAC meeting. In February. Um, but I would say staff right now would want to know with, with what Jack presented regarding the interchange. If there are questions or concerns that you'd like to have answered specifically before that PAC meeting. Um, because we're well aware and we're, you know, listen to Mary's comments and all that, when we get to the project level. When we talk about seventy-sixth street ramps and what we want to do as a solution there, things like that aren't going to get dropped because of a vision decision.
Um. Okay, um, so are there comments from council members on the interchange?
I just want to thank Councilmember Whalen for asking questions when he doesn't understand, because if he doesn't understand, I probably don't understand as well. So thank you for answering my questions and for Councilmember Whalen's questions, it, it helps, it helps us non-engineers exceedingly to go slow with us, so.
Councilmember Whalen.
Um, circling back to, you said the, I mean, the, that route to and from the Best Buy campus. Seems to be like a pretty key question to the interchange, um, and you said that's still under study, would that be? Um. Would that study happen and be able to impact a decision by the PAC on the interchange? Is that going to happen before the PAC makes that decision?
Uh, I, we'll ask MINDOT, we'll, we'll see what we can, it depends on what they really have done. That, if they can answer that question within the data that they've done.
Yeah, Councilmember, I'll chat with our project team and see, I, I feel like we have. A lot of this information and that helps validate that, that box and the access and the ramp, so I, I feel like we have that, it, it is very complex. So trying to find a way to give the information that makes sense to you, but I'll circle back with the project team and see what we can get.
Yeah. I mean, to, even as simple as this, this map we got of the accessory configuration. If that map exists for the box, that's all we need.
If, if I could, if I could just add to that, uh, a little bit, that and even a brief memo. Is, is really, is really helpful too, I know we had the, the study on the impacts of the, um. The inter, the, not the interchanges, but the, the removing of access points on twelfth and, um, and Niclet. And we got about, um, um, and it may have been even before Councilmember Whalen's time, but we got about eight. To ten, we got about a dozen slides that, that were maps of data points, but without context. Would not have been helpful, and now as we're having the conversation about how important the underpass is to affecting those. If we wouldn't have had a memo and we had to ask for a memo to say, thank you for that oral report, could you put that in writing? And now it's exceedingly important, so I'd just say as we have those conversations, map plus the, the written thoughts is really helpful.
Um, Councilmember Whalen.
Sorry, one last quick comment, just to your question about kind of the role of the full council. Um, as someone who's not on the PAC, I'm comfortable with, with our representatives deciding on behalf of us. Um, I appreciate these, these sessions to get updated and share our commentary. Um, but I'm, I'm comfortable not having a more official vote on things until we get to the project level.
Um, I'm just going to read Councilmember Supple's, um, notes again for the folks who might be listening, I know staff receive this. Um, so one, with regards to the four ninety-four thirty-five interchange, I am concerned about how many employees. Of the Best Buy US Bank area complex will access the freeway, the concept of drive the box puts a lot of pressure on city streets. Two, have the impacts on local travel time within and through the box, have they been fully investigated? Three, does this extra local traffic volume adversely affect the air quality for Richfield residents as cars sit? Backed up at stoplights as they drive the box. I would support the vision of a broad, of the broad project with the following provisions, one, the Cedar Underpass is funded. Two, underlying residual issues on the cross, on crosstown are dealt with since it's. It will be the primary detour and we don't want problems spilling over into city streets. And three, local impacts are fully addressed and remediated, see above.
Well put, Councilmember Supple.
Um, other, other comments from folks? Um, City Manager Rodriguez.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to sum up with next steps, um, so the next PAC meeting is in February. Um, I think we heard from policymakers, um, pretty clearly that we'd like from MINDOT some more information on. The exact impact, um, of travel through the box with the improvements. And then also if you want to get any additional comments to me, um, staff can answer questions and I'll share that with the council.
Great, any last things, comments? All right, we adjourned this meeting, thank you so much for presenting and thank you for coming again.